Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Rod Newman is the pastor at Oklahoma City University. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Sawyer if she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Shall we pray? Oh God, we pause this morning to say thank you. Thank you for the rich tapestry, that is Oklahoma City community. Thank you for the rain that moistens the earth. And thank you for life itself. We appreciate this new day because we know that it is not just any other day. It is a day where there will be births and deaths. Anniversaries will be celebrated on this date because of what happens today. Marriages, new jobs, and people getting driver's licenses. Make us good stewards of this day. Alert to opportunities to care for each other. Guide us to make good decisions for the benefit of all. We pray that you bless those who work in offices and on streets, those who are sick and those who care for them, our schools and travelers. Bless this council in their work. May we all give our best as we celebrate our life together. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Rod Newman has taught my Sunday School class from time to time, and he is just a great teacher.
We have a number of family-owned businesses in Oklahoma City, but very few of them are celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. I'm going to ask Larry and Andy Schwab if they'll come forward. We have a proclamation for Schwab meats as they start their second century of business in downtown Oklahoma City. Congratulations. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas George Peter Schwab immigrated to the United States from Germany and began his meat company in Oklahoma City in 1912, and his curing and preservation of meats and slow-hick re-smoking process continues to this day. Whereas Schwab Meat Company organized pork processors and set standards for food safety that continue to this day. The company moved to its current location in 1920 and has grown nationally and expanded many times. Whereas George's grandsons Larry and Scott Schwab now run the family business. Whereas Schwab Meat Company is well-known for its community and charitable involvement, sending beef rations to troops overseas and providing assistance to local charities. Whereas Larry Schwab, president of Schwab Meat Company, spearheaded a before-and-after-school program to encourage walking and exercise that resulted in more than 4,000 Putnam City School District students participating in the 100 Mile Program. Whereas Schwab Meat Company has survived the Dust Bowl, the Great Depression, and two world wars, and emerged each time a stronger company with a greater commitment to Oklahoma. Whereas Schwab Meat Company now celebrates 100 years of business in Oklahoma City. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim January 29, 2013, as Schwab Meat Company Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation and acknowledge another 20 years. Congratulations. That is great. You bet. Thank you all very much. You bet. And we'll see you again in 100 years. All right? Okay. That bicentennial will be here before you know it. If you're following along with the council agenda, we're on item three. It's the office of mayor, and we're going to begin with a presentation from the Commissioner of Health and the Secretary of Health and Human Services for the state of Oklahoma, Dr. Terry Klein. Dr. Klein has been asked by the council and I to come in and give us an update on several health issues that affect people that live in Oklahoma City. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the invitation to be here, city council members, other officials. It's my first time before the city council, so I very much appreciate this opportunity to speak to you today. What I'd like to do is to provide you with some background information and talk about a couple of very key issues that are challenges for us as a state. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you for your great work and leadership in terms of transforming Oklahoma and in particular Oklahoma City. I think those are benefits that we will see in short order that will benefit not just the residents here, but the entire state. So I have some background information for you. We're just going to key this up and see if it goes. I may need to enlist some help. This is not a very informative slide. There we go. So, so does this actually work though? Going backwards. I don't think it is. Maybe it's not turned on. So what we have in front of us are, we talk about health a lot. We talk about the health of our residents. We talk about our own health, health of our families and communities, but many times we're confusing health with health care. And we are often confusing all of those things that actually determine our health. We talk about going and having a doctor's visit. We talk about some things that we might do. What this slide actually shows you are those primary determinants of health. These are the things that actually influence our health. And if you look at that, you can see the role of the city and the role of the city council represented in many different places there. I did a presentation just last week. The city manager was there, and he heard me say in front of a different audience how important water and sanitation is. Something that we take for granted, most of us, every single day. Something that has a huge benefit on our overall health. If you've ever been without that, you recognize immediately how important that is. And if you look at unemployment, healthcare services, housing, work environment, all of these things influence our overall health. The next slide actually makes the point of telling us what proportion of these different types of activities have the greatest influence in terms of impacting our health. So we talked about all those determinants, and now if you look at, well, how much of that is attributable to which factors? This is a study that was done by the New England Journal of Medicine, and it's a good news, bad news presentation. The good news is that the majority of our health is actually impacted by what we do. It's what we do every single day. Makes sense when you think about that. What I do immediately when I get up in the morning, you know, am I heading to the cigarette pack first thing as soon as I can crawl out of bed, sometimes not even crawling out of bed? What am I putting in my body in terms of nutrition? How physically active am I throughout the course of the day? Those are the things that have a huge impact. You see 40% of our health is actually impacted by what we do. That's kind of the good news part of the presentation. You don't have to wait for national healthcare reform. You don't have to wait for the state legislature or for that matter, for the city council. All of us have a responsibility in doing that, and we can impact that. And where that gets more complicated is that sometimes the healthy choice is not the easy choice to make. And this is where I would like to take a moment to congratulate the city council. One of the things that you're doing is that you're making healthy choice the easy choice in many situations. When I'm talking with people about becoming more physically active, and I'll actually have a little bit of information on obesity, sometimes that's easier said than done. If I say this to a family, and I want you to be more active with your kids and go out for a walk, and you don't have sidewalks in your community, you are literally putting your family at risk when you go for a walk with your family. That's not the kind of choices that we want to provide. So the healthy choice there is not the easy choice because people are basically trapped in their homes. They don't have a healthy option. They can't go out and take advantage of now the hundreds of miles of sidewalks that are being built by the city. This is a great improvement. So it's actually making the healthy choice the easy choice for people. When you are putting in bike trails for individuals to be able to hop on a bike and actually go and travel hundreds of miles, instead of the people I know who are cyclists who in the past would be out on a country road hoping that some, you know, farm equipment wouldn't be coming down the road or someone who's not prepared for them, and there's no shoulder to ride on and bad roads, they're literally putting their lives at risk to cycle, which again, we want to be able to promote that or just provide that safe environment for people to be healthy. The city is doing an incredible job through maps repeatedly putting those dollars to good use for the benefit of all citizens. And literally, you're protecting the health of the individuals who live within this jurisdiction by providing those opportunities. Some of those challenges, if we just go to the next slide, you can see that we have had a continual period of challenge in our state. This is a national ranking from the United Health Foundation, America's health rankings, and it is a relative ranking. So even if the state of Oklahoma was seeing improvement each and every year, but we were being outpaced by other states that were more aggressively improving the health of their residents, then our relative ranking would go down. It's relative to other states. So even if we were making progress, if everyone else is moving more aggressively, more quickly than we are, then our relative ranking would go down. So part of this, I want to be clear, we've seen consistent improvements in our health in many areas, but we're not seeing improvements at the same rate as many other states that have been much, much more aggressive, that are moving much more quickly. And I'll provide you with a couple of examples of that. We are seeing an uptick over the last four years. Part of this, whether you're ready to accept the credit for this or not, I'm crediting some of the changes that we're seeing in Oklahoma City as part of that, and I think we'll see some of the trends change. And because of the huge population represented by Oklahoma City, changes here again, I believe will have a significant impact on overall state ranking. These are, this United Health Foundation ranking is actually made up of dozens and dozens of different factors. You have a one-page handout that was provided to you, which actually summarizes some of these factors. So it has a bar graph there. It has a couple of different graphs, and we're going to talk about those with a little bit more detail. But it basically is broken down into, so it's not part of your multi-packet. It's a separate standalone page that has a lot of numbers on it, and it's broken down into different sections. And one of those sections is titled determinants. So in public health, we're always trying to get ahead of the curve. We're trying to produce a healthier population. We're trying to really live that mantra, which is prevention is better than cure. So if we can prevent an illness, if we can produce a well population, that's actually better than cure because cure only goes into effect after someone has experienced an illness, then they're cured from that illness. If we could avoid that entire illness trajectory for an individual and for a family, that's much better. So we're very interested in those things that influence our overall health, those things that determine our health. And the United Health Foundation has broken those down into these different categories, which you'll see on that standalone page, behavior, community, environment, policy, and clinical care. And you can see how we rank. And you look at that, you can see there are several areas where we're in the 40s. Our overall health ranking is 43rd this year. The ranking that just came out, just a couple of years ago, we were ranked at 49th in terms of overall health. But the way we get there is that we have all of these individual determinants that actually drive those changes. The determinants then influence those actual outcomes, which we have coming up here. Again, dozens and dozens of measures. So we will look at a couple. One will be diabetes and obesity, and the other will be cardiovascular disease and tobacco use. I would be here much longer than you would want me to be here if we spent more time going over all of these, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have if I don't talk specifically to the point that you're interested in during my presentation. So we'll just go to the next one. The first one we'll start with is obesity. This is really, I think, a fascinating slide because it shows the challenge that we're facing as a nation for obesity rates. If you look at 1990, the legend is at the bottom. You can see a map of the United States. We really only needed two points or three points on the legend that went up to 14% of the state's population being obese. And that's actually measured as body mass index greater than 30, which is the technical definition for obesity. So in 1990, you only needed those three points on the legend, up to 14%. You go 10 years later to the year 2000, you'll see that we've actually, as a country, needed to add two more points in that legend because the country has become so much more obese. And now we're up to a category that includes 20 to 24% of your population being obese. Didn't even need those categories in 1990. And then you go another 10 years to 2010, which is the last year I have this national data, and you see that we've had to add another category, over 30% of the state's population being obese. You start to see some interesting patterns emerge with this too. So again, it's, in public health, we like to think about how these pieces of the puzzle fit together, how we might get ahead of that curve. If we see a trend that we're concerned about, how can we actually change that trend line? So the actual outcome that we're looking at for this particular slide, which can be a driver for other outcomes, is obesity. If you look at that pattern, there might be some things that come to mind. You just look at the country, and that bright red area, you might begin to wonder, well, what pattern makes that spend consistent over these decades? Why is that more of a challenge for this part of the country? And there's some interesting things that come to mind. I'll put out just a couple of those that might be question marks for you. I'm not saying those conclusive. I'm just saying those things that might stimulate some thinking. One could be a hot climate, right? It's, you're talking about a hot part of the country right there. You think, well, why would that be a factor? Well, if it's hot and it's inhospitable to outside activities, people might be more inclined to stay inside where it's air-conditioned and cool. I don't know. Maybe. That could be. In this part of the country, we also have populations that are centers that are not as dense. I remember attending a presentation from Dr. Shadid on urban sprawl and kind of seeing that spread. That makes us certainly more automobile-dependent. That means that we're less likely to be walking to work, walking to public transportation. We might actually, you know, rely more on our cars than other parts of the country, in particular areas like the northeast. That's going to have an impact on a level of activity, which would therefore have a level of impact on obesity rates. You will also note, if you were looking at socioeconomic status for the entire country, this tends to be more poverty-stricken area of the country as a general rule. And we know that there's a very strong correlation between poverty and health outcomes. So if you're looking at improving health in particular communities, job creation is actually a very important part of that. Has nothing to do with my responsibilities as Commissioner of Health, but I'm here to tell you that job creation is important. People have good-paying jobs. They'll have better housing. They'll have better education for their family members. They'll have access, better access to healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. So you can see how these things really fit together in an interesting way. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the pattern for the entire country. And again, this is just a different representation of obesity rates in our state and in our country. The bottom line, which is hard to tell the color from this, is actually the obesity rate for the country, and the top line in those later years is actually the obesity rate for the state of Oklahoma. You can see that we have paralleled the country and that increase for a good piece of time, but then in just a little over 2,000, you can see a real divergence there where Oklahoma's obesity rate has climbed at a steeper rate than the rest of the country. And you'll see that for the country, it's starting to level off a little bit, and there may be some hope about that changing trend line in Oklahoma as well. Oklahoma has had the single largest increase in obesity rates of any state in the last 10 years, at about an 18% increase. That's not a trend line that I want to see as a commissioner. Certainly not a trend line that you would want to see as city councilors. If we go to the next slide, you'll see one of the reasons we're concerned about obesity is that obesity is a primary driver for diabetes rates. And where you see high rates of obesity, you will see high rates of diabetes. So that's of grave concern. If you're looking at the workforce for the population within your particular communities or in the state, if you're looking at healthcare cost in your communities or the burden on employers in your communities, you should be concerned about this slide. I heard a, actually, it was in a conversation with a school nurse who was telling me, and I used to be very cautious about naming the communities, and now I'm much less cautious. I just put it out there because it really applies to the whole state. This is a school nurse from Norman, who we were just chatting about some of these things as we do in public health. She said, you know, actually, we have over 40 kids in our public schools, another issue of concern for you, junior high and high school, who require management of their diabetes during the school day. So they need to have school nurse onboard, on staff, to be able to help manage the diabetes for these kids in junior high and high school, and it is driven by obesity, which has become an epidemic. Five years ago, she didn't see that. Maybe five kids, maybe a little bit more than that, but certainly not over 40. And that was new data for me. It was very alarming because I didn't see that. I don't have that trend data. I didn't see that anywhere. I know this trend data, but I wasn't seeing it at this rate for kids. So I began to ask about that. When I traveled to Lawton, I asked the school nurse there, you know, so she made a phone call. They had over 40 kids in the Lawton Public Schools. I was doing a presentation to Leadership Oklahoma. Somebody was texting during my presentation, which I'm glad to see you all don't text during presentations. And I thought, she's not paying attention to my presentation. But turns out, she's on the school board for Enid. So she was texting to get the answer to that question after my presentation. She said, they have over 20 kids in the Enid Public Schools who require insulin, diabetes management during the school day. So now resources that were being used for education are now being used for school nurses because you need to be able to manage that during the school day. So it does have an impact, and it'll have an impact on your budget too. And I don't know that trend line for you. You might want to ask that, but I'm guessing it's the same as I've asked that question across the state, very, very similar answer. So when we look at our current healthcare system, which is burdened, underfunded, overburdened, and has too much demand right now, how is our healthcare system going to deal with this generation that did not have the same demands as this generation does in terms of healthcare? These kids will be managing a chronic disease for 30 or 40 years. Many of these kids are struggling to manage their weight, and they may well have difficulty manage that, managing that moving forward, which is part of the appropriate management for diabetes. And if it's not appropriately managed, these kids may suffer blindness, may suffer amputation of limbs, and potentially ultimately death. If they manage it well, they can be fully functioning, productive members of society. But I'm predicting that for many of these individuals, it's going to be a challenge. Go to the next slide. You can see it's important actually to drill down into the data a bit here. We see differences with different racial, ethnic groups within our state and within communities. So as you see, even some leveling of obesity rates for many ethnic minority groups. One group where we see a significant increase is in the black African-American population. So between, especially between that 2007 and that 2010, you're seeing a very significant increase in the African-American population in terms of those obesity rates. So again, when you're looking at interventions, and for you, it might be sidewalks, it might be green space, it might be parks, it might be all of those things. One of the challenges I would put out for you is, are we actually strategically placing that infrastructure in that built environment? Are we making improvements in areas that will impact these groups that may be disproportionately impacted in terms of health outcomes? So that's again, part of your strategic planning process. Certainly, the types of things that I think about as we have targeted African-American churches, we actually contract with a number of African-American churches because we believe that that's a great opportunity to reach a large number of people within the African-American population about education, food options. If you're on a limited budget, how can you actually shop and find foods that are healthy? It's not easy. If you think about a conversation with the mayor this morning, the high number of fast-food restaurants that we have in our community, and you think about a limited budget, even if you're committed to buying fresh fruits and vegetables and you walk into a grocery store, and I have a family of four to feed, and I have a limited budget, and I have a box of macaroni and cheese for a dollar and a quarter versus one banana that's 75 cents, I can tell you, I'm going for the macaroni and cheese. So the easy choice is not always the one that's the healthy choice, and certainly the names imply that. Convenience stores, fast food, I mean, they are marketing specifically around that. So we have a lot of challenges. And again, I think the things that the city council has done in terms of the built environment will have a huge impact on our health. And I don't have the slide for this, but you can see it in that single-page handout, a new ranking that we're looking at is sedentary lifestyle. And you'll see that Oklahoma ranks 45th in terms of sedentary lifestyle. So we need to do things to get people moving. I actually don't buy the whole warm climate hypothesis. There are a lot of climates that are warmer that don't have the same challenges. You look at New Mexico, there are a lot of places that have inhospitable temperatures in terms of being much colder than Oklahoma, like Minnesota and Utah, that have much better health outcomes. So that doesn't explain it alone. If we go to the next slide, we'll look at the last big indicator that I have, and I have some supporting data. It's really around tobacco use and smoking. In the state of Oklahoma, right now, we are ranked 47th in the country in terms of our tobacco prevalence rate. 20, so we, if you look at the actual percentage there in the latest data, it's about 26%. So you'll see an increase. This is a good opportunity to tell you, there's been a change in the methodology. All of these indicators, most likely, are going to see a jump. It's more accurate information. It doesn't mean that our trend changed. You see those two points at the end of this. What it means is methodology changed, so they're including more cellphone users. We know that there are a large number of households that are actually cellphone-only, and those typically are homes with lower socioeconomic income. And many other homes have landlines for security, excuse me, for security systems and other things like that. So including this actually provides us with more accurate data. But if you look at our smoking rates right now in the state of Oklahoma, that 26-plus percent, that's more than one out of every four people in the state of Oklahoma, is engaged in the number-one preventable cause of death. So I'm getting my sympathetic smoking cough for you here, making it clear that I do not smoke, but even conversation about it brings it on for me. We have, if you, if you think about one out of every four people in our state engaged in the number-one driver of cardiovascular disease, so we have actually more people who are dying from tobacco-related cardiovascular disease than we do from all forms of lung cancer, other forms of cancer combined that are tobacco-related. A lot of people don't realize that tobacco's killing a lot of people through heart disease, but it's not talked about as much. There's been great publicity and increased awareness around lung cancer. We're killing a lot of people through heart disease, a lot. And you'll see, again, kind of interesting pattern where Oklahoma was trailing, the rates were higher, but we were trailing right along with the rest of the country. And if you kind of smooth out these lines a little bit, you'll see that Oklahoma really just kind of plateaued. It just leveled out, whereas the rest of the country saw a significant decrease in those tobacco rates. So that's what's really interesting. So we see a decline for the whole country. We want to see those rates go down. Again, it's the number-one killer, number-one preventable cause of death in our communities. We want to do everything we can to bring those rates down. And many other states, obviously, this is, again, you're looking at those relative rankings, the other states have been much, much more aggressive in attacking this killer and protecting their residents and protecting the health of their residents from this killer. And the result is, those rates have gone down for the rest of the country, and in Oklahoma, they have not. If we go to the next slide, you'll actually see that there is a decrease. If you look at this, it's a little bit closer, kind of microcosm of that data. And if you were to smooth that line out, you would see that we have seen a statistically significant decrease over the last 10 years for tobacco. It's not, you compare it to that earlier slide, it's not nearly as steep a decline as we see in other states. And you'll see the rate of former smokers. So not only do we have fewer people who are starting, but we have more former smokers, people who actually quit. And for the first time in 2010, we saw these two lines cross. So that's really good news. So now we have more former smokers in the state of Oklahoma than we have current smokers. That's good news. I'm not all do- I'm not all doom and gloom here, so bright and early in the morning, there's actually good news in this. And that's actually, it's a huge issue, because what it tells us is that we can drive these rates down. But it takes, remember, all of those determinants, it takes behavioral change, it takes policy change, and it takes community change to really drive those down as aggressively as we would like to see. If we go to the next slide, we're obviously very concerned about the rate for kids, because that's the predictor for the next generation. Again, we're seeing these rates come down. Can you imagine in 1999, one out of every three kids was smoking in high school? Unbelievable today. So the good news is, we can impact that, we're bringing those rates down. But that makes for a very unhealthy population, a very unhealthy workforce, and a very unhealthy state, when one out of three people is engaged in that. Now again, some of those structural changes that we've seen, one was, if you go to the next one, you'll see that the overall number of sales for tobacco have gone down in our state. We had a significant increase in the tobacco tax in the early 2000s, that we know is a primary driver in bringing down rates, because people who have less discretionary income will not be spending that income on a product that's more expensive, and it does drive down those rates. And you saw that, one of the arguments against the increase in the tobacco tax was, you will simply drive everyone to the smoke shops from the tribes, you won't see an overall improvement in the state. This makes it very clear, this is tribal and non-tribal, so we're selling many fewer cigarettes today than we were ten years ago. So that kind of counters that argument. Go to the next slide, you'll see some of the impact on this, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we can do policy-wise around tobacco. This is the last kind of real data slide, this is looking at life expectancy. Again, my conversation with the mayor before this meeting, a lot of times, people don't know what they don't know. This is the way it is in Oklahoma. It's hard to, if you, unless you travel a lot, you don't really know, are we healthy or are we unhealthy? And this is what I've grown up with, this is the environment that I'm surrounded by. Well, actually, if you look at that data and you do some comparisons with the rest of the country, one of those gold standard pieces of datum that we look at is life expectancy. And you can see, most of us know from our own personal experience, that women typically live longer than men, that's a national trend, an Oklahoma trend. So if you look at the US data, you go across, you'll see females typically, their life expectancy is about eighty-one years of age, and for men, it's about seventy-six. So you may know this experience from your parents or grandparents or other people, women typically live longer than men. But what you may not know is that then, if you look at Oklahoma's life expectancy and compare that to the United States' life expectancy, it is significantly less. So if you're born and raised in the state of Oklahoma, you can expect that your life expectancy will be about three years shorter than it would be if you were born and raised in almost any other state in the country, on average. And you'll see that for men, so the pattern holds true, women live longer than men, you're just scaling it down. So while the rest of the country is at about seventy-eight years of life, and we're at seventy-five, and eighty for women, it's seventy-eight for women in Oklahoma, and while it's seventy-six for men across the country, it's seventy-three in the, in the state of Oklahoma. So it's a shorter life expectancy. And as I said, in public health, we're very interested in trends, is it getting better, is it getting worse, all of those things. So if we go to the next slide, we're looking at really two decades' worth of data and life expectancy. Is it getting better, is it getting worse? So at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds, by the way, the life expectancy in the United States, at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds, was forty-seven years of age. And I'm just kind of looking, I'm going to make no assumptions, but do some guesswork, and I'll just speak for myself, that would have knocked several of us, or at least a few of us, out of the picture with a life expectancy of forty-seven years of age. So that's an amazing change, right? That we're all benefiting from today. The fact that we're here, if we were to do the average age in this room, it's higher than the life expectancy would have been expected for at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds. So great improvements in public health. So then, the question is, are we continuing to see those gains across the country, those benefits of public health? Are we continuing to protect our citizens so that they can garner the benefits of a longer life, or are we not? So in the United States, across the last two decades, you'll see the life, and we look at these big blocks of data, because if you have an epidemic, if you have a war, you have something that causes a change in that life expectancy, that can influence your data. So we like to look at big blocks when we look at these changes in time. That's why we're looking at two decades' worth of data. So the life expectancy in the United States has actually increased by about a little over three years over that two-decade period. That's fantastic. That is great, that is true success. And the biggest beneficiary have been males with an increase of four years, and to a smaller extent, females at two years. So this is the national data. So remember, women are living longer than men already, right? But now, men are starting to catch up, so what we're seeing is kind of a closing of that gender gap in terms of life expectancy. Women have lived longer, they're still seeing some gains, but it's not as steep as the gains that we're seeing from men across the country in terms of life. So we're closing that gap, the gender gap, in terms of life expectancy. That's great for the country. So now, let's take a look at Oklahoma. You've seen the data. So while the rest of the country was seeing a life expectancy increase of over three years, in Oklahoma, the life expectancy increase is point-four years. So what we know from that earlier slide is, we're already behind, right? By three years, overall, we're already behind the rest of the country, and as the country is seeing these gains, is Oklahoma keeping pace with the rest of the country? This slide would tell me, no, where they were not seeing the benefits of what we're doing today yet, but what we've done in the past has not produced those results, we have not protected our citizens in the way that many other communities have done. So three years for the country, point-four years for Oklahoma. We look at men, again, the pattern holds true, four years for the country, one-point-two years, a quarter of the same benefit, almost, that the rest of the country is, is seeing in terms of that lengthening of life expectancy, and then the shocker, the real shocker is that next piece of data. You look at the improvement from women, two-point-one years, and for women in Oklahoma, a decrease in their life expectancy. So this information has been trended out for decades, and we have, as you heard, at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds, we've seen improvement since that time, and again, a lot of it goes back to water and sanitation in the eighteen, late eighteen hundreds, all of those things benefiting our population. We're beneficiaries of all of those decisions, we've seen that trend increase. For the first time in history, first time in history, we're seeing a decline in life expectancy for one of these groups, and it's women in the state of Oklahoma. That is a wake-up call, because we've seen a significant trend line that not, has not only plateaued, it's not just become stagnant, it's actually declining. Will it continue to decline? I don't know. We'll have to stay tuned. Two thousand nine is the last year that we have national data, this takes a long time from death certificates and other reports coming in to get that. So this is, in terms of national data, kind of hot off the press, but that's a very, very concerning trend line, because it does not bode well for the future. So some of the benefits that we've seen in terms of that decline for tobacco use, even though it's gradual, those benefits, I'll just tell you, have not been equally represented between males and females. Women are not quitting at the same rate as men, and we're not seeing the same declines for women that we're seeing for men, and there's been very specific targeting on the part of the tobacco industry toward women. You think about products like Virginia Slims, I mean, who are we targeting with that? You look at the advertising, and many of the magazines that would carry that in the past, definitely targeting females. So if we go to the next slide, this is the very last data, it's one that is, this, has so much information included in that, it's the mortality rate for the entire country and for Oklahoma. So this is the rate of death for one hundred thousand people in your population. So the bottom block is the mortality rate for the country, and the top line is Oklahoma. The thing that's significant about this, I have to clarify, mortality rate, unless you're a public health person, may take some explanation, because everybody says, well, as far as I know, the mortality rate's a hundred percent, right? I mean, every single one of us is going to go out. So that's true, but the mortality rate as we define that are the number of deaths per one hundred thousand people. So if you were to look at this group as the population of Oklahoma, and I told you that two people every year from this population will die, then that would be the mortality rate. And then, if you were to compare that to, if I told you that fifteen people out of this room are going to die every year, yikes, that's a much larger percentage of this population. So that would have more significance, it's a higher mortality rate, and that's exactly what we're looking at here, except the population is the entire state of Oklahoma, the number of people who die each year out of that kind of fixed population. So you want to see that rate go down, obviously, people living longer, and that's reflected, and the whole country's seen it. So again, the United States and Oklahoma, we were neck and neck right up until the early nineties, and then, the rest of the country continued to see great progress and advancement in Oklahoma. It didn't, you know, all of a sudden, see a spike, it's not that we had a volcano that erupted, and, you know, you know, we had toxic environment, and there was some huge change, there's nothing like that. What happened is, we just didn't get better. We didn't push the envelope, we were not making the decisions as a society and as a community that would reflect those same kind of improvements that the rest of the country was making. And the majority of those types of decisions were policy decisions. You start to think about, well, would it really, would people in Oklahoma just all of a sudden decide, well, I'm not going to do this, or I'm going to continue to do that, and the rest of the country, just on their own, people individually, were making different decisions? No, this is really about how policy drives the environment, and how the environment helps individuals make healthier choices. Is the healthy choice the easy choice? You know, if I was, and I bet there was a day when smoking was allowed in this chamber, is that true? Right? Does anybody here remember that? Okay, so some individuals who remember. Can you imagine today, today, I mean, it's just unthinkable that those people who choose not to smoke would be surrounded in a smoke-filled environment, it's just so hard for us to even imagine today. But we're changing the norms, and we're changing the expectations. And I guarantee, if someone came, first of all, they wouldn't get by the guard, walking in here with a lit cigarette, it just wouldn't happen today. The norm has been changed. We have successfully changed that norm, the same way that you wouldn't expect to see someone light up a cigarette in, in an airplane, or in my barber shop, I remember my barber with a cigarette dangling out of his mouth as he's cutting my hair, I mean, you just can't even imagine that today. We have changed, successfully changed the norm. But it's only a gradual change, and it's only a gradual change in that expectation. Many other communities were much, much more aggressive, and many other states were aggressive in making and limiting that access to that number-one killer, tobacco, that number-one preventable cause of death. We know it's bad for you, we're beyond that debate, no amount of this product is good for you. If you go to the next slide, I'm going to talk just briefly about preemption. You actually, and you may not know this, but I think you do, because you're a well-educated city council, most people in Oklahoma don't know that their communities are prohibited, forbidden by law, from enacting laws that would allow them, or ordinances that would allow their communities to be tougher on tobacco use than the state law, you're prohibited. City council, right now, cannot decide that you are going to get tougher on tobacco than what is allowed by state law. Now, if you want to talk about protecting the people of this community by having more police officers, you have that power, you want to drive the crime rate down, you have that power, you want to make sure that this community is protected in terms of fire protection, and you decide you do or do not want to hire more firefighters, you have that within your power to do that, you have the ability to influence speed limits, you have the ability to influence how strong buildings, building codes, other things, you can get tougher than the state law in all of these areas. The one area you cannot, so usually, state law provides a floor, it's a baseline, you have to be at least this strong, you have to at least have these protections for the citizens. But if Oklahoma decided, Oklahoma City decided it wanted to be the healthiest community, then you could do all these other actions, but the one area you're prohibited by law is in tobacco. How bizarre is that? Well, it's not accidental, there actually were state laws that were passed in the late eighties and early nineties that took away the right of communities to do that. You used to have the right, you used to have the power, you used to have the authority to protect the citizens as it relates to tobacco use, but you're prohibited by doing that today because of laws that were successfully introduced by the tobacco lobby in the late eighties and early nineties, successfully introduced and passed. So that right, that authority was taken away, and has not been returned to this date. So if you go to the next slide, say just a little bit about why it's important, no amount of, of smoke exposure is good for you, no amount. You can have debates about alcohol, you can have debates about other things that you may put into your body, but the data is very, very clear, no amount of tobacco exposure is good for you. You can see all the chemicals, toxins, seventy of those chemicals that actually cause cancer, so you, I mean, again, this is kind of connecting the dots, is it any wondrous, the number-one preventable cause of death, it's killing so many people? And by the way, you remember, our tobacco rate's forty-seventh, our cardiovascular disease rate is forty-eighth in the country, forty-eighth, only two other states have higher rates of cardiovascular disease death, and it's because our tobacco rates are so high. And you'll see the increased risk for heart disease and cancer. Go to the next slide, you'll see that it is, it's taking a huge toll on our state. Six thousand lives every single year lost to a preventable cause of death in the state of Oklahoma, six thousand lives. So I'm guessing, if you had an automobile accident on an intersection a few blocks from here that resulted in a death, and two weeks later, you had another fatality at that intersection, you're going to start to get calls to the city council. And I guarantee, if you have three, or four, or five deaths in subsequent weeks, your community is going to be outraged. The city council needs to do something about that intersection. You either put in a stoplight, you lower the speed limit, you put in speed bump, you do something to make that intersection safe. And I have confidence that the city council would do it, if you had that kind of compelling data, where lives were being lost, and people would be outraged. And yet, you have six thousand lives every single year, and you may not be getting those phone calls, because people are not connecting the dots with this number-one driver, which is tobacco use. And you've done what you can do from the tool chest of available tools that you have available to you, but the biggest tool that's available to you is the ability to make communities indoor, air, public places smoke-free, and you can't do it. So the number-one, the biggest tool that you have available to save lives for your community, to protect your citizens, you're deprived of that authority and that right, and that power is held at the state capitol. And it's held there for a reason, because lobbyists, there were twelve paid lobbyists last year, tobacco lobbyists alone, want that power there. They have much more ability to influence the decisions that are made in one building than they would be to influence the decisions that are made in hundreds of communities across this state. So if communities have that right, they have that power, they're going to have a hard time fighting it. And I can tell you, right now, there are a lot of communities that are lining up that want their communities to be tobacco-free, if you go to the next slide. You can see that we're surrounded by states that have those protections in place. So when I talk, so I'm from Ardmore, and when I talk with Wes Stuckey, who's our big economic guru guy down there, and he tells me that he's competing for business from San Antonio and from Texas, he told me, they lost business, because there was one particular company, this is just recently, where they're concerned about the health of the workforce in Oklahoma. I mean, my gosh, look at the stats here, these are the people who are going to be driving your economic engine, your workforce, for your businesses, and you better be producing a healthier population if you're really banking on economic development. And if you look at our surrounding communities, they either have a state law that bans tobacco use in indoor public places, or they allow communities to decide that for themselves. That's why you'll see differences in those numbers. You may have one state law, so you don't need dozens of smaller community ordinances to do that, because the state law covers that. I can tell you, right now, the tobacco industry knows it very, very well, the possibility of getting a statewide ban in Oklahoma is incredibly low. I wouldn't bank on it. And the tobacco industry knows that. But the tobacco industry also knows if that communities are allowed to have that authority... But the tobacco industry also knows, if that communities are allowed to have that authority, that many communities will pass those, because you're closer to the issues, you know the impact on business, you know the impact on economic development, you know the impact on schools and resources, because you see it all, you live those tough decisions, just like in education, where someone has to decide, we need more nurses instead of more educators, that's coming out of your budget. So the tobacco industry fears that, and they've been fighting a passage of a law that would return that right. But we're surrounded, so you're looking at economic development, you're trying to recruit businesses in, and you're ranked forty-seventh in the country, and you were ranked, or forty-third now, actually, and you were ranked forty-ninth in terms of overall health of your population, it's a hard sell. If you go to the next slide, you can see there was a recent study that came out, looked at the fifty most populated cities in the United States. Forty-four of those large cities actually have those protections for their citizens. You look at Texas, just as an example, Texas does allow for that individual right and that individual authority. So San Antonio, just within the last two years, went tobacco-free, Dallas, Austin, Houston, all of those communities, they have those protections. As a matter of fact, you can see forty-four of the fifty largest cities have that protection, only six don't. And two of those are in Oklahoma, Oklahoma City and Tulsa. So if you go to the next slide, just kind of a visual map of that, you are surrounded by communities that have smoke-free ordinances firmly rooted in place. And I would say to you, when you're looking at economic development, this is your competition. The city manager in Seminole was telling me, they started doing exit interviews for those businesses that they weren't capturing, you know, they're trying to recruit businesses in. So he started asking the questions of those businesses that they're losing, not just why did you come here, but why did you choose not to come here? And health was the number-two issue, education was first. So education and health. So when a business knows that they're, let's go to the next one, all the evidence tells us that this is going to be bad for you, Pueblo, Colorado, actually passed a tobacco-free ordinance, they drove down the heart attack rate between thirty and forty percent. Get this, between thirty and forty percent, because they passed a tobacco-free law. Surrounding communities, controlling for all these variables, did not reap the same benefit. I mean, it is pretty striking. So if you have within your power the ability to decrease the heart attack rate, the demands on the emergency rooms for all of your local hospitals by forty percent, wouldn't you want to have the power and the ability to protect your citizens and drive down those rates? Right now, you don't have that ability. Go to the next slide, you can see that the voters from the statewide polls that we've done, they actually understand this, and the majority of people are in support. This is what the tobacco industry knows, too. They don't want this going out, they don't want communities deciding this. Let's keep it in the hands of a few people that we can influence, because you start to drive this down to the community level, and communities are going to make these decisions to go tobacco-free, I mean, it's just so compelling. Go to the next slide. You actually have the ability to, to help with this. You have been a great influence, the city council, just as a reminder, actually passed a resolution in support of that change in the law. I would encourage you to do that again. You actually were the very first city council to pass a resolution like that, and since then, we have seen several other communities across the state that have followed suit of Oklahoma City, have followed your leadership in doing that. So we have a number of other cities that have done that. I can tell you, I have heard conversation from some communities that said, you know what, we have too many people whose lives we're losing, we're going to do it. Take me to court. I'm not suggesting that you do that, because the state health commissioner would never encourage you to break the law, but I have heard from communities who have said, we're going to step, we're stepping out there, the stakes are too high, and let's see who sues us for doing that. And I bet if you follow the money trail on that, it'll be an interesting trail to follow. City manager shaking his head, I don't think so, we're not going to go down that path. But it really does beg the question, if you had the power, which you do not have to this day, to save all of those lives within your community, large hundreds of those individuals are coming, are within your realm of responsibility, are you doing everything within your power to save those lives? I would say Oklahoma City has been very courageous, has provided great leadership in pushing the envelope to this limit. So I would encourage you to be very active legislatively. The Oklahoma Municipal League has this as a top priority, because they really believe that communities should have the right to decide, the city governments should have the right to decide this for themselves, and then let communities decide it. Some communities may decide to do that, and some may decide not to. But have faith in the power of decision-making at the local level. So we frequently hear rhetoric at the state capitol, I don't want the federal government telling us what to do, we think those decisions should be made closer to home, so feds stay out of our business, how often have you heard that? But then when you apply that same principle on this issue, from the state to the local level, somehow that principle, that die-hard principle, kind of goes by the wayside. So I would encourage you to be very, very active with your legislative body, not just for your community, but if you have any of those opportunities for discussion with other leaders in other communities, the stakes are incredibly high for this, and until we have the ability for communities, I have faith in communities to make the decision that's right, to protect those residents within your jurisdiction, until you have that authority, we'll see that mortality rate, they're just kind of flat-lined, it stayed level right there, we will be refused those benefits for our residents. So if we go to the next slide, and we're actually done, there are some resources, and time for questions is the very last slide. The State Department of Health, and you also have the Oklahoma City County Health Department, which is an autonomous body from the state health department, we are resources for you, so if we can be helpful to you in any way, please let us know. You're being held up right now as the example, not just within the state, but nationally, in terms of that built environment. The one area that holds us back is, is tobacco and tobacco use. Actually, the Daily Beast, which is a kind of super blog site that's managed by the owner of Newsweek, year before last, put out a huge blog about Tulsa, said Tulsa's the smokiest city in the United States. When we do everything that we can to improve the image of our state and our communities, and I believe Oklahoma City's been very successful in doing that, we're still combating this image around tobacco use in our state, which is holding us back from really reaching our true potential. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will conclude my comments. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Dr. Klein, you know, there were efforts made a year ago to try and get municipalities to have opportunities to, to limit smoking. It failed.
Yes.
What has changed in the last year? Should we be more, more optimistic or more pessimistic? What, what do you think?
So the, so again, public health, very interesting in trends, so we'll trend out our progress on this particular bill. Two years ago, this bill was, three years ago, was introduced, couldn't even get a hearing. So that means no debate. That means that the leadership would not allow this bill to even be debated. So they know the same data, you know, killing six thousand people, four thousand youth addicted every year, and you won't even allow it to be debated. So last year, for the first time, we actually got it out of the House Committee and out of the House, off the House floor, first time, it really was a huge move. Made it over to the Senate, made it to the Health and Human Services Committee in the Senate, where the chairman would not allow it to be heard. So it wasn't debated on the Senate. So it died, a death there. We're hoping that it will be assigned to a different committee this year, one where, I mean, you would hope that Health and Human Services would be a good place for that, but it wasn't. The chairman actually is from Tulsa. Tulsa has been vocal about some of their opposition to clean indoor air ordinances and laws, in part, so again, I just say things I shouldn't say, but I'm going to say, I mean, in the past, there had been a very large corporation that owned convenience store chain that was located, headquartered in Tulsa, has over five hundred stores, and that group had actively fought this bill every single year. Tobacco sales represent a very large proportion of profits for convenience stores. So again, you do the math, and you're really putting, waging wages against the health of your citizenry. This last year, the owner of that convenience store said, I'm going to be neutral on the bill this year, I'm not going to fight it, I'm not going to support it, but I won't fight it. And they actually have their own paid lobbyist, and said, we won't fight it. So I'm hopeful that they'll take that same stance this year, that that large business will not be fighting this, it's held us back, they've been incredibly successful at killing that bill in the past. And I think part of the reason we saw some movement is that company said, we'll be neutral. So I'm hopeful they'll be neutral this year, I'm hopeful it'll be assigned to a different committee, and that because many communities are speaking out very, very loudly, that it will be difficult for your state legislators not to strongly advocate for that change. So when a city council comes out, that carries a lot of weight. And that says, the will of this community is that we want to have that decision made here. And that carries weight, so I would encourage you to take that path, again, to join with the municipal league and others in carrying that voice out. So I am hopeful, because it's made it an additional step every year. We will actually begin that campaign in the Senate. And part of the challenge, because this issue has never been debated, and there's never been a vote, never been a vote held on this, you have legislators who like, you know, they can claim they've never had an opportunity to weigh in, so they've never been on record for being for or against this bill. If I was a legislator, I would not want to be on record for being against a bill that allowed local communities to make decisions for themselves about something as important as this. And I don't think that communities, that those individual legislators would want to be on record against that. So far, they've dodged that bullet, because it hasn't been heard. So that's the change that we're looking at.
Terry, could I ask another question that's somewhat off that subject matter, but the indicator that we are worst in, in this ranking number, is the number of primary care physicians.
Yes.
And we rank forty-ninth currently, our value is eighty, and the best state is a hundred and ninety-four.
Right.
What are we doing?
So this is, and this is, you know, a little bit outside my sole responsibility. So we ranked forty-ninth in terms of the number of primary care physicians per one hundred thousand people in the population. We have consistently ranked forty-ninth for several years. There was actually appropriations granted last year, three million dollars from the legislature, that will go primarily to rural hospitals. So you look at the number of primary care physicians, you say, well, we're forty-ninth in the country. The thing that makes that even worse is that the, there's a huge concentration of those primary care physicians in our large urban areas, that means that, so you're bad for the whole state, then you concentrate people primarily in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, those rural areas have very few primary care physicians. So the strategy was to fund some residency programs, additional residency programs in rural areas. What the data tell us is that if you do your residency there in those rural areas, you're most likely to stay close to your residency, within a few miles. So that's part of the strategy to get us there.
Skip. Dr. Klein, first of all, thank you for such a very in-depth presentation of information. Last Thursday, we were together, and this issue was part of the discussion with the guest speaker at the Presbyterian Health Foundation Board Meeting. One of the, the interesting comments that was made when the question was asked as relates to this gap in reference to healthcare, and it was that much of the legislation is driven by the rural legislators. When you look at the, the issue of smoking, when you look at the issue of deaths and major health issues, is that ever really emphasized from the population, per capita population of the rural part of Oklahoma City, compared, I'm going to say, the rural part of Oklahoma compared to your most urbanized cities such as Oklahoma City and Tulsa? It would just seem that if there was more information about the fact that people in the rural America and in rural Oklahoma are dying at a more devastating rate than those in the urban areas, there would be some, some legislation that would, would, would bring about some change.
I think for, for tobacco, you might be surprised at some of those communities that have been very aggressive. So you have, just as one example, Talacaw, which did pass an ordinance, which makes all parks tobacco-free. I know there's been some debate about authority to do that in Oklahoma City, and there are several other small communities that are being, so again, they're bumping right up against that line, and they have passed ordinances. These green spaces where families congregate will be tobacco-free. And a lot of those rural areas have, have been those groups that have followed Oklahoma City's lead and have passed those resolutions. So I think, you know, part of, again, the, when you look at, so you, you really have two different factors at play here. When you look at population health for the entire state, obviously, your population densities in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, so you have huge ability, the decisions that you make will have huge ability to influence the health of the entire state. When you look at representation at the state capitol, then you're kind of a disproportionate disadvantage, in terms of the number of population that you really have, and all those other legislators who may have different demographics that may unite them on some other issues. It just so happens that tobacco is not one of those, where we're seeing a difference in the urban area and the rural area. Again, a reason I think the tobacco lobbyists are fearful, they know that you're going to get those decisions made at that local level. And the strategy, as, you know, kind of going back to the mayor's comment about what's different, we actually did the roll count, as you typically do before a bill, and we knew that we had the votes on the House, to get that off the House floor, we believed that we actually had the votes for the Senate floor, but what we couldn't control, so if it actually went to a vote of the entire Senate, I believe the Senate would have passed that bill. But again, as you know, a great lobbyist strategy, and I'm not saying it's exactly what they've done in this situation, but it only takes one person in a key legislative position to kill a bill and not allow it to be heard, and that's exactly what happened in this. One person made the decision, it's not going to be heard, and it died. I believe it would have passed on the Senate this year, this last year.
My second question. You made a statement, when you were talking about the, the issue of diabetes and obesity in, in young people, and, and in the African-American community, unfortunately, it has a very high percentage as it relates to these issues. I represent an area that is truly, you know, unfortunate to have the numbers that it has as it relates to stroke, diabetes, high blood pressure. And you talked about how the educational process has been to have relationships and connections with the faith-based community in the, in the, in those areas. What has been the relationship with the school system? Because I think that a lot of these children, you know, some of their first meals sometime, decent meals, are with the school system, and has there been any acceptance or working relationships with the county to try to change the, the physical fitness programs, the food intake, and the overall educational process of, of health with the school systems all over the state?
It's a great question. And one of the challenges that we have with our state is, we are, as you know, and there are times it's an advantage and times it's a disadvantage, we have a very decentralized system, and where we have local superintendents and we have local districts, sometimes that makes it a challenge in terms of having a statewide type of initiative or law passed, like taking the vending machines out, physical activity. We have run a bill for several years that would increase the level of physical activity requirements in schools, it's not been successful. And so again, at the state level, that can be more of a challenge, and I think there's a ninety-minute requirement, physical activity per week for kids currently, that's not much physical activity. What you do have locally, to speak to the specific question locally, there's a program called Schools for Healthy Lifestyles, which is in many communities, primarily in the Oklahoma City area, there are about sixty different schools where individual choice of the, on the part of the school to participate in this program, and it really is the adoption of a- And it really is the adoption of a health culture within a school. So it's privately funded, and they actually raise money privately to be able to work with the schools and offer some resources. The evaluation for that program is remarkable. So you're right on the money. That's a great place to intervene. And not only are they seeing improvements in health outcomes in terms of lower body mass index, the, you know, the kind of surrogate measure for obesity, and tobacco rates, and increased muscle tone, they're also seeing an increase in academic scores. So the argument for many schools in the past is, you know, you're talking to us about physical education, you're talking about, you know, all these things that take time, and we are focused on our scores. We have to produce these scores because there are consequences if we don't. And they've always talked about that in a way, it was kind of an either/or, like they're mutually exclusive. So what this data makes very, very clear is that these don't need to be mutually exclusive. You can actually focus on health and integrate it into your curriculum. So be things like math. So instead of just doing old standard math, you might actually be counting calories. You know, this food has this many calories and this food has that many. You add them together, how many calories do you have? How many calories do you need in the course of a day, you know, to actually be physically fit to maintain your body weight? Well, it's like 2,200. Well, how many of these can you eat and have that body weight? So you're actually educating people about health and you're doing math. You can do the same thing with science, you can do the same thing with geography. I mean, there are creative ways to integrate that, so you're not having a separate health class that's taking away from any other curriculum. And Schools for Healthy Lifestyles have done a great job with that. There are now, there's a program, we have Certified Healthy Oklahoma Program that has certified healthy businesses and communities and schools. And we have over 153 schools that are certified healthy schools. So we actually provide technical assistance to the schools. We actually, you know, provide some criteria that you can follow that are those easier-to-do things. Once you have become a certified healthy school, then you're eligible to apply for a grant from the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust. If you receive one of those grants, then that money has to go back into a health-related activity. So you might become a certified healthy school, and then you apply for a grant, let's say you get $15,000, then you can put that $15,000 toward, you know, we're going to put in a new track at the school, we're going to take the deep fires out of the kitchen, we know it's the right thing to do, but we haven't had the money to kind of reconfigure our kitchen, those types of things. For communities, you can apply to become a certified healthy community. We have 43 communities in the state that have become certified healthy communities. You have to do certain things to meet those criteria. If you become a certified healthy community, then you can also imply, apply for a certified, an incentive grant through TSET. That ranges different levels in cumulative over three years. The smallest amount, a couple thousand dollars based on population. The largest amount is up to $250,000. And that's the level that Oklahoma City would be eligible for in terms of being a certified healthy community. So right now, we have well over 1,000 businesses in the state that are certified, completely voluntary program, over 1,000 businesses. We just introduced the school category and the community category this last year, so we have those over 150 schools. We have an event coming up, I think it may be in April for this last round. So we had over 900 applications in these different categories for certification, and over 755 that will be certified. So there are those opportunities as well for schools. Schools are great places to do that. And many of the schools are certified healthy schools right here in Oklahoma City.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Klein? Pete?
Dr. Klein, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you being here, how much I appreciate you taking your time to come down and talk about this. You probably know that one of the, one of the top legislative priorities at the state level for us is this legislation that we're talking about. I was interested to know, to note that your concern is where, what committee assignment this gets. And I was, I had a call yesterday about that, about how the city might impact that. And it's my understanding that a whole group of cities are trying, working on just that one topic, just try to get the right committee assignment in the Senate. So I plan on talking about that later, about how we do it. But I appreciate so much your comments, and all the nice things you said about Oklahoma City, too. Oklahoma City is kind of elected to take the bully pulpit view of it as opposed to passing the law that our attorneys are telling us we probably would be over the line on. We've done something with parks where we talked about, these parks are smoke-free, but we didn't say, go into jail if you don't smoke here. We just put up the sign. And I think our experience has been, I've talked to the Parks Director about it, and if you just look at the number of cigarette butts they're having to pick up today compared to what they were before we started that, I think that program's been successful. I think to some extent, it's been emulated around the state, and we're all kind of pleased about that, and I appreciate your comments about it, too.
Thank you. Just thank you to the entire council for your leadership.
Ed?
I just also want to thank you for coming. I think it's so important that you're here. I think we missed an opportunity, really. We had, you talked about the built environment and how the impact, clearly, that impacts public health. And this is where it's designed, at the city level. I think if we had, we went 40 years from 1960 to 2000, we didn't build any sidewalks. I feel like if the public health community and the city had been more engaged, maybe things would have turned out different. And I just hope going forward that we continue. This is my kind of city council meeting. This is awesome. So I really appreciate everything. I just want to ask you two questions, following up on what, on schools. There's a couple of bills this year, one by Richard Moore said on identifying and educating kids at risk of poor nutrition, and one by Anastasia Pittman for a Health Education for Middle Schools Act. Can you talk about comprehensive health education? I know you touched on it a little bit, but also, we talked with Janet Barisi here about six weeks ago, and she really, she said that as part of the grading system, the A through F, that physical activity and nutrition wellness really isn't incorporated in that. Is there a way to incorporate the certified healthy schools standards? Or where do you see health, the possibilities for getting health education? How would you like to see that formulated? And could that be incorporated into some of those grading systems?
Again, I think it's a great question. I think that the continued partnership with the Department of Education is going to be critical. The bills that we have introduced in the past have not been successful in doing that to the same extent. And there's, you may be familiar with the Fit Kids Coalition, which has worked very, very aggressively around vending machines and physical activity in schools, and did see some success over time, but it was a multi-year approach, really, just as we're experiencing with tobacco, too, a multi-year approach. I think if you stay tuned, that you may see some movement from the governor, who has been a very, very strong health advocate. She had, as you may know, signed into an executive order last year banning the use of tobacco use on all state property. So she's kind of a parallel to you. She said, I'm going to do what I can do. I have limitations within the law, but I can do an executive order that'll ban it on all state property. I think you'll see some movement. She's been very engaged in our Shape Your Future campaign and helped launch that Shape Your Future campaign. So you'll see some movement there. And I would take that as a very encouraging sign about the amount of attention that we'll have to this issue with the schools.
Can I ask one final question, and that's on poverty. As I read through the public health literature, it seems to me that public health is at least as strong and determinant as smoking. I mean, poverty is at least as strong and determinant as smoking. We, in Oklahoma City, we have about 17% of our population living in poverty. So 600,000 people, roughly one out of six people, 100,000 people in the Oklahoma City borders living in poverty. If you look at the city counties, this is, the different colors represents wellness scores. And the dark blue, you see that those with the worst public health outcomes are all concentrated in one cluster in the dark blue, basically within 10 zip codes. That also, if you overlay poverty, matches up very well. And I know correlation and causality are different, but I just want to ask you about, we have very low unemployment here, but we have so many people living in poverty. So clearly, people are working, but still within the poverty level. Obama talked several years ago about trying to get the minimum wage increased. If you take, say, 1968, the inflation-adjusted minimum wage at that time would be $10.50. Today, it's $7.25. Is it a fair statement that as the years go by and we don't see an increase, that as inflation increases, that segment of the population is falling further and further behind? And just from a public health perspective, would have a harder and harder time meeting some of these public health objectives?
So I'm not an economist, so I don't want to exceed the scope of my knowledge base here. So I can't really speak to the relationship with the minimum wage. What I can speak to is that direct relationship between poverty and health outcomes. It's been widely, widely researched. There's no doubt that there's a very strong correlation there. What I don't know as much about is then how do you turn that economic picture around? And how do you do that? Is it around job creation? Is it, and you end up with this kind of circular dilemma. How do you make, you know, this community or the state a place where businesses will invest, that you're creating jobs, that you're actually making it a desirable place to live, that people will settle? It's part of what I see happening with the larger Oklahoma City, is it kind of changes that transforms an old outdated image. I think that's been a challenge for us. You know, specifically targeting within the northeast part of Oklahoma City, which is actually where I live, we, you know, have the, Oklahoma City has just placed their regional center there, which will be opening in the not-too-distant future, they'll be having their grand opening there. And part of the goal is not only to provide opportunities for physical activity in terms of the fields and things like that, but also being a resource for the community. So there will be active services around jobs and other things. And I think that's being done out of that recognition, that if you have an impoverished community and you don't see changes with that, you will continue. All other factors, even seeing some improvement, you're going to be very, very limited in terms of the overall health improvement that you'll see. It's just a huge driver. You saw it in that map. So you take this map and you enlarge it to that United States map that I showed. It's the same principle in terms of poverty.
I would hope that we could at least start a dialogue. I don't, you know, it's obviously, things like minimum wage are much more than just public health. But there are 14 states who have decided not to wait any longer and have increased the minimum wage on their own. Our neighbors in Santa Fe have just increased the minimum wage, not wanting to wait any longer. And I just wonder if that, if specific poverty measures should be part of our public health discussions. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Klein. Quick question, if I could. In the area that I serve, a number of the students that go to our elementary schools and are on the free lunch program, the food that they're served there during their free lunches and their free breakfast, does the state health department, do you all look at that to see if that's, meets kind of the caloric intent, the good health intent to fight obesity?
The food program that you have in the schools is actually a federal program through the USDA. So that is not administered by the state at all. That's a federal program. And actually, there were guidelines that were changed just this last year, that are going into effect this year, to increase the number of fruits and vegetables that are provided as part of that. So that's, you have flexibility, so again, this is back to the, there are certain minimum requirements that you must meet if you participate in that program as a federal program. Then schools have the ability to tailor that. You know, many schools, it's, we have been our own worst enemy. So you walk in, and a lot of schools were contracting out those services, and literally, you had this fast food line here, you had in your school. You might have a Pizza Hut line here, and a Taco Bell line here, and some other line there. So Schools for Healthy Lifestyles have really grabbed hold of that and recognized that we need to make sure we're providing that as an opportunity. But we do not have authority over that particular program in the schools. That's a federal program, USDA.
And then, along the same line, in working, I've put some hours in working in a food pantry, and you used the term macaroni and cheese as, I can remember handing out a number of boxes of macaroni and cheese to people who needed food, but what I got from you was that's, could be a self-fulfilling prophecy of promoting obesity in the people that are eating that. Did I take that wrong, or is that a correct assumption?
Well, if the choices between macaroni and cheese, and you can provide fresh fruits and vegetables, I would opt for the fresh fruits and vegetables. You end up with a lot of management challenges, of course, right? That macaroni and cheese can sit on the shelf for however long it can sit there. And the fresh fruits and vegetables, the volunteer work that I've done with food pantries, it's a challenge having perishable items there. So that becomes the same challenge for the stores, for the convenience stores, and everyone else. If you had that as an option, that would be fantastic. And actually, you reminded me, so we do have, there is a program we're trying to support, a farm-to-school program, which is helping to bring fresh fruits and vegetables from local producers directly into the schools. Might be that you could do something like that with your pantry as well, to actually have an arrangement with a local producer, say, we will, you know, during the growing season, you bring those here, we'll make sure they get distributed out to you or to other people, some sort of partnership like that.
All right. Dr. Klein, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate your work. We're on item 3B, the council agenda. The next item is the appointment of Jim Roth to the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 22nd. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 15th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five is uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning, in addition to the one listed on your docket for item 8A, and I've misplaced it. They are on page 10, under item 8G1, under 8G1, item B, 2120, Glenn Allen, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item C, 3129 Pioneer Avenue, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item J, 2341 Northwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
All right, any other, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Well, recess the council meeting, convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Four items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, let's cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA, convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items. Make it four items. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OCPPA, convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I had two quick things, 6H7 and 6X.
Q and R, please. Meg, you want to get started with item H?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually an item that's being introduced today, and it's being set for final hearing on February 19th. But I'm not going to be here on February 19th, so I wanted to mention it today. And this is a special permit issued for the YWCA's domestic violence shelter. And I think many people know that the Y has been undergoing a capital campaign to more than double the capacity that they have available, our shelter, providing services to battered women, remains 99.9% full, 365 days of the year. It's one of the, it's actually the only certified shelter in the county, and this will provide a tremendous opportunity to serve many more people. I think Chief City has told us that the police receive about 120 domestic violence calls a week, which is an extremely high number. And so I really want to just bring attention to the work that Jan Perry and her staff and her board are doing to address this issue in the community.
All right. Thanks, Meg. Item X?
And item X is one of many MAPS III issues that are on our agenda today, but I did want to just bring special attention to this item, and it's the contract for architectural services for the new expo building that's being built out at the Fairgrounds. And, you know, this is a fantastic project. We're going to take the seven buildings that are out there and combine them really into one under-roof, large facility for use by all of the community. one under-roof, large facility for use by all of the community. Efforts that take advantage of our fairgrounds, and so it's really, it's a super project and a great master plan.
Ellen Brown is here today, if you'd like to grow in.
Were you going to talk about this, or just to be? Great, well, thank you for being here, Ellen. It's a really terrific project.
Ed, you wanted to talk about Q and R?
I want to, this is the incentive program, interstate job transfer incentive program for Boeing, and I just want to, I'd like to vote on this separately. I'd also like to express caution as we vote on this today and also enter into, this is 1.8 million for some 285 jobs, and then we look at another 4.5 million for between 800 and 900 jobs. That combined would represent about almost 10% of our 2007 GEO bond incentive fund, which was about 75 million. Boeing, my understanding, is part of the 21st century quality jobs from the state for the 200, the arrangement was that for 255 jobs, the maximum amount of money through payroll rebates over 10 years would be 26 million. So Boeing is, is going to receive some, a maximum of $26 million for these 255 jobs, and then we'll add 1.8. I'm, I'm not sure that this deal doesn't get done for 26 million as opposed to 28 million. This is part of the Boeing business model. It was profitable every year for a decade between 2002 and 2011, and despite being profitable every single year, paid a net, by deferring income, by parking a lot of money offshore, paid a net tax of negative 6.5% on all the, all the business that Boeing does over a decade, negative 6.5%. So it's different than a zero-sum game, as some people argue. It's actually a net outflow of taxpayer dollars, which shrinks the tax base necessary for the education and infrastructure investments which benefit all employers. That's the risk. Realize that we can call this job creation, or we can call this whatever we like, but it's not new jobs, it's job movement, it's interstate job transfers of jobs that already exist. Some 80% of states, 40 out of 50 states, do not allow intrastate job incentives, including Oklahoma. In other words, you can't give incentives to move jobs from Enid to Oklahoma City, Panka City to Oklahoma City, but it's okay, Panka City's not okay, but you can go to Wichita and give incentives to move them from Wichita to Oklahoma. I, I think we have to look at the, why you would have, the rationale for not allowing intrastate job incentive movements, but you would allow us to go a little bit further to Wichita, some of the same rationale is going to apply. The problem is that a tiny number of companies get huge subsidies, but the net impact of jobs is minimal. And so a concern I have is that we're not diversifying our incentives. Existing in-state and city expansion of existing businesses in your city and new startups accounts for almost all of your job creation, not moving jobs within a state or from one state to the other. It's, it's taking businesses that already exist and helping to expand or doing new startups. I was struck when we went to Minneapolis, we did an inter-city visit, and our, our visitors were asking their Chamber of Commerce and their mayor, what kind of, you have so many Fortune 500 companies in Minneapolis, how do you, what kind of incentives do you get to get these companies? And there, there was a complete disconnect between our quest, it's, we don't give incentives for interstate job transfers. We invest in our own companies here in Minneapolis, and we grow them, and that's how we create new jobs, not move jobs that already exist to a new, to the city. So that, that's my concern. Pat Ryan, who unfortunately is not here, he talked about, I believe during MAPS III, and he's talked about an incubator program. Imagine $75 million of this GEO bond going towards a business incubator program. How many jobs would that create? $28 million for 255 jobs seems steep. And so I would question, are there studies that compare the effectiveness of interstate job transfer incentive programs with job expansion programs with the city's existing businesses? Last year's Chamber of Commerce survey on company expansion indicated that there seems to be a need for that. Businesses have the space on hand to expand, and many businesses want to expand. I guess the final question would be, let's say that Oklahoma City does decide to engage in this, and it's not just the 26 million from the state, but we want to give local incentives also, because we're going to get these jobs that, that are within Oklahoma City. But being only one of two states that, that is only able to derive our general fund from sales tax, income tax that is generated by these jobs doesn't come to us, property tax, it's sales tax. So I guess the question would be, where do these new employees that are working at Boeing, where do they live? Do they live in Oklahoma City? Or what percentage live in Edmond, Midwest City, Moore, Norman? And so sales tax is actually being generated in all those regionally. And so I guess one question is, why does Oklahoma City bear 100% of the incentive burden? Why isn't there a regional, why isn't Edmond paying for some of the incentives? Why isn't Moore or Midwest City, which is right, this is right next to Tinker? Why, why do those other municipalities not, why isn't there regional participation? The other, the other thing to look out for is that in this game, what, what has typically happened, and Boeing as much as anybody else, you pay for the interstate job transfer, you get the jobs to your community, and then what happens is that you get asked later for retention incentives. If, Wichita gave lots of incentives for, for those jobs, and now they're leaving. So at some point, as jobs are being transferred in this shell game, one thing that happens is that then these companies come to you a decade later and say, we need to move to X. Will you pay retention incentives to keep these jobs? If the rationale is that it's worth $28 million to move these 255 jobs today, a decade from now, will it be worth another 28 million to keep them here? And I just bring that up because it's happened over and over and over empirically, and I think it just needs to be on our radar. The bottom line is that factors such as the cost and quality of labor, the quality of public services, the proximity to the markets, and the access to raw materials and supplies are much more important than tax incentives and business location decisions. Boeing is moving next to Tinker Air Force Base because they're consolidating and saving money. I loved the mayor's interview with Streets Blog, which was a two-part, thousands of words. The mayor very eloquently laid out how we are able to, there's 2,000 people coming to the metro area, and our unemployment rate is staying the same. So we're, we're generating jobs. It's not, there wasn't one word in that, in that interview about interstate job incentives. It's build, it's spending, investing in yourself, building a quality of life, having lower cost of living, those are the kind of things that bring jobs, not, I don't think the studies bear out interstate job transfer incentives. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? And Ed, you want to pull those two items and vote separately? Okay. Can we have the motion then for the consent docket minus Q and R?
Mayor.
You want to talk about one of the items first?
I just wanted to make a comment, and then probably could do it with items for council, but let me just go ahead and acknowledge it now.
Okay. Which item do you want to speak on?
6O.
Okay.
And this is just a, a thank you to the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County, to partnership with the City of Oklahoma City on the ASA South Hall of Fame, to the improvements of the parking lot at the South Hall of Fame. And we'd just like to thank particular County Commissioner Willa Johnson for her leadership in making sure that we have a partnership as it relates to this project.
Appreciate that. All right, so can the motion be for the consent docket minus Q and R? Gary, I think you made the motion. All right. Nodding his head. All right, so we're voting on the consent docket except for Q and R. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. And now we're going to, how about a motion on Q and R? Okay. Vote on Q and R, and it passes 7 to 1. On to the concurrence docket, there are two items. Do we have a second? All right. Comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. First item, 8A, has already been deferred until February 19th. Item 8B has to do with the city's retirement systems, comes from our Personnel Department.
Mayor, this was presented last week at council, and these ordinances need to be in place before January 31st. So today, we're, we're asking that this be approved on final hearing with the emergency.
Okay. All right, comments or questions on item 8B? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And a second? Cast your votes on the emergency. Passes 8-0. Item 8C changes some of the operations for our model airplane facilities out at Lake Draper. We have one person that has signed up to speak. John Bart?
Mayor, it might be, if Marcia could outline the, what the ordinance is, then he could comment on that, maybe help us, so we all understand exactly what the ordinance is.
Sounds good to me. Marcia, you want to have a, stand up here, and then we'll hear from John.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning to introduce the radio-controlled model aircraft ordinance. Debbie, I, I, I'm not advancing, if you'd help me, please. Thank you. The Baxter Flying Field is land leased on the Lake Draper-West Elm Creek Restoration at roughly southwest, southeast 119th Street and west Lake Stanley Draper Drive. The club's been in operation, the Baxter Flying Club, for 30 years. This ordinance amendment. Again, please. We, we need to let you know that the club's making a lot of improvements at the facility. Next slide, please. And finally, that the ordinance specifically designates this area for, for the use as a flying field, that it creates fees, permit fees for use at the field, annual fees of $50 a year for adults and $25 a year for youth, for example. It creates regulations for operation based on the Academy of Modern Aeronautics, pardon me, the Academy of Model Aeronautics standards. We propose, we present the ordinance today, we propose it for consideration at a public hearing on the 2nd of February, and for possible adoption on the 19th of February.
Good morning, John. Thanks for your patience this morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, sir. My, my name is John Barrett. My address is 804 Northwest 8th Street, Moore, Oklahoma.
Okay.
I'm the acting president, or current president of the Baxter Model Flying Club. We're a rather large group, 60 people in our club. There are a number of clubs in the area, if any of you are familiar with the sport. The wonderful thing about clubs is that we promote the, the sport and the hobby among all people. And as a group, we like to, we bring people in and we teach them about the sport, how to fly, how to fly safely. What we are hoping to, to achieve here by improving the facilities is, not just to help Baxter Flying Club, but all the local clubs, plus it will give us the opportunity to sponsor and host state events, statewide events. There are a number of places we have, El Reno has for a number of years sponsored the Warbirds Over Oklahoma, which that has become a little bit unhinged. They don't actually have a home at the moment. We might be able to sponsor them and have them here. But there are a number of events. I have a, a very short YouTube video, which I would like to present to you, if I may. It is actually-
What's it going to show us, John?
It is a, it is an event which was held in Lindsay, Oklahoma, last year. It is the type of event we hope to have here, that we hope to host here.
Well, can we just see a few seconds of it?
Yes, sir.
I just don't want to establish a precedent of people showing up with YouTube videos.
Indeed. I, I apologize. I wish I had been able to mention it earlier, but-
I don't mind seeing a few seconds of it, just to give us an idea of what we're discussing that might be pertinent.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. John, you want to come back up to the microphone? So what you're saying is, is an example of, of what could be taking place inside the Oklahoma City limits, and you-
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We're trying to establish out at Lake Draper, a newer and better place for hobbyists in flying planes.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion then on item 8C?
Yeah, I'd move approval. I tell you, this is the ideal location for this, and this, the plan we're using here to, to run this is one that we've, has been tested with the all-terrain vehicle folks that are located close to that place. And we're just trying to give the model airplane folks some ownership in the, in the operation, in the hopes that that'll bring it up a notch. And it, it certainly has worked with the ATV people, and we, we have every reason to think it'll work here, so I'm real excited about it.
It's great to have all these user groups. I mean, that's what, what it's for.
Right.
It's nice when they all work together.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
We're voting on item 8C. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D addresses some of the regulations about street vendors.
Couple of changes on the downtown design districts, and Russell Claus is here this morning to outline those for us.
Morning, Mayor and Council. As you know, from, we, the Plane Department is in charge of the administration of all of the different design districts, and one of those is the downtown design district. And from time to time, we find it necessary to make various modifications to the, to the ordinance to enable it to be more effective and easier to use. We had a couple of instances in last year that generated the need to make some changes, so we took that opportunity to review other things. We generally keep a list of changes as, as we run into these over time, and we try and present these on a fairly regular basis, every six to 12 months, but like, once a year is our preference. So these are the downtown design districts, and this is what would be affected by this particular ordinance change. And there are two urgent issues, two urgent issues that relate to what I was talking about in, in triggering these changes. One is outdoor sales and display. We ran into an issue last year at the Myriad Gardens where we were unable to support vendors who were selling water and other necessities in support of events in the gardens. That has been addressed on a temporary basis with a variance to the Board of Adjustment, but this is a permanent solution with the ordinance that will permit the, for, for events to be able to operate outdoor sales and display, and enable them to operate just as you would see them anywhere else in the country. And we also found an oversight that affects just the downtown District 1-
And from time to time, we find it necessary to make various modifications to the ordinance to enable it to be more effective and easier to use. We had a couple of instances in last year that generated the need to make some changes, so we took that opportunity to review other things. We generally keep a list of changes as we run into these over time. And we try and present these on a fairly regular basis, every six to 12 months. But like, once a year is our preference. So these are the Downtown Design Districts, and this is what would be affected by this particular ordinance change. And there are two urgent issues that relate to what I was talking about in triggering these changes. One is outdoor sales and display. We ran into an issue last year at the Myriad Gardens where we were unable to support vendors who were selling water and other necessities in support of events in the gardens. That has been addressed on a temporary basis with a variance to the Board of Adjustment, but this is a permanent solution with the ordinance that will permit the... For events to be able to operate outdoor sales and display, and enable them to operate just as you would see them anywhere else in the country. And we also found an oversight that affects just the Downtown District 1, Transitional District 1, where we, there was a mistake that prevent, that exempted off-site temporary staging for construction. And this affects the edge development. At this point in time, they are actually not permitted to be, to do off-site staging. So this corrects that error as well. So these were the two main changes that we have made to the ordinance to facilitate these two activities in the future. Other things that we've done, we've changed for outdoor, for outdoor sales and display. Again, this is to facilitate non-accessory merchandise to be sold in the district. It ensures that this is a temporary arrangement, so when these goods are not being actively marketed, that they have, they have to be removed. And if they're not, it also prevents, as we have in the past, it clarifies the prohibition about sales around the memorial because of the sanctity of that site.
Russell, may I just go back to that slide?
Sure.
Is that designed to, for instance, allow the pop-up shop kind of thing?
Correct, yes.
They've done in the gardens, or the festival, or where they wouldn't normally be selling merchandise?
Yeah, it's recognizing that the downtown environment is changing substantially. The kinds of activities that are now being proposed in the downtown area, this is to facilitate that.
Perfect. Thank you.
In terms of general cleanup, we've changed, these are, changed definitions. One of the main things here is that we've allowed for appeal of administrative approvals. So if we provide administrative approval that somebody was dissatisfied with, or disapproval, that they would be able to appeal that to the DDRC and get a second hearing on that. On new provisions that we've included, we have always encouraged preliminary review of projects. That is now captured within the ordinance, so that that is clearer to applicants. So that is something that we would like to see them do, particularly for those complex, large-scale projects. We've also added intent language for parks and open areas, which was something that was missing before. Large display banners have become more common in activities in the downtown area, so we want to ensure that the guidelines regarding when and how long those can be up are clear to everybody. And then various setback requirements, running the setback issues where we're actually, the older provisions are encouraging the kind of thing that we don't want to see. So that should make it easier for the kind of urban development that we're encouraging from here on in. Fencing, we had to modify the fencing standards for the city as a whole, this regards front yard fencing, to be able to facilitate what we were looking for with front yard fencing in the downtown district. So that's the intent there. And also prohibiting the kinds of fencing that you don't want to see in the downtown area, particularly the standing rib steel fences really don't work that well in an urban environment. We have been through a design committee, saw this in October, it's been through the Planning Commission, and now it's before you today for consideration. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I, one of the points was, is restrict sales around the memorial?
Correct.
When you say restrict, was, I mean, are they allowed it now, or?
No, that's been, that's been a limitation for some time. The language clarifies that. It's to ensure that you don't have hot dog vendors set up around the memorial. It's recognizing the sanctity of that district in the downtown area.
So are they prohibited, as opposed to restrict?
This would prohibit this, yes.
Okay.
Russell, early on, you talked about allowing off-site staging in District Number 1. Could you explain what that means a little bit?
Well, when you're doing a project of the scale of the edge, for example, you're tearing up the entire site to be able to redevelop it. So you need an off-site area to stage your operations, where you have your construction site trailer and other activities required to support the development. That's, that's all it is.
Any other comments or questions for Russell? All right, thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
Do we already have a motion on this?
Move it.
All right, we're voting on 8D. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E makes some alterations to TIF 8.
The ordinance amendment before you today amends the project plan for TIF Number 2 and TIF Number 8. We're going to start with TIF Number 8. First of all, the amendment that's before you today proposes to decrease the overall budget for TIF 8 from the original budget of $175 million and decreases it to $157 million. On the more specific project categories, there is an increase in the redevelopment framework project, which we also know as Project 180, to increase that budget from $115 million to $121 million. And this reflects the budget changes for Project 180 that the City Council has already considered and approved. We also propose to decrease the budget for other economic developments from $40 million to $24 million, and the money set aside for the other taxing jurisdictions from $20 million to $12 million. And those will all add up to the reduced budget of $157 million. We've reduced the budget, if you recall, because some of the revenues associated with the Devon Project did not come in as anticipated. In particular, the sales tax revenues from the construction of their building were not as high as what we originally projected them to be. Therefore, we did not have as much cash to cash fund some of the project costs of Project 180 and had to use debt to finance those. So that resulted in an overall decrease in the budget for TIF 8. There are also some other amendments associated with TIF 8 that include a new definition, or an expanded definition, of what other economic development is. And that can be found on page 11 of the Redline version of the project plan that's in your packet. The other change allows for the, for the Devon Implementation Committee to be dissolved once the Project 180 projects are completed. So that will happen in a few years from now, probably. The ordinance also provides for several changes to TIF Number 2, and this is our overall downtown TIF district. These changes propose to increase the budget for TIF 2 because TIF 2 is actually performing better than originally anticipated when we set it up almost 12 years ago now. So those changes include increasing the budget for residential development from $20 million to $30 million, increasing the hotel and commercial development category from $20 million to $30 million, and increasing other public development costs from $15 million to $20 million. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions about TIF changes, and that will be before you for final hearing on February 26th.
Okay. Item just being introduced today?
Yes.
All right, and the final hearing on February 26th.
Can I just ask about the $20 to $30 million hotel increase? What's the...
It's really a broad category that's for commercial development. So it's hotel, retail, commercial is the broad category that's in the project plan. And we've, we did use it for funding of the incentives for the Skirvin Hotel, but really, it's been mostly used for commercial development, like office or mixed-use development.
Could that extra $10 million be used for a convention center hotel, or?
It could be, if the council decided that was what they wanted to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on item 8E? Item being introduced today, final hearing on February 26th. All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and this one moves on. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion? I hear a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, and 8G passes unanimously. Item 8H has to do with Maps 3. Looks like David Todd is here. He's going to give us a little bit of a preview of what's might be coming up with the Whitewater facility.
Good morning. I'm happy to be here this morning to talk to you about the Whitewater facility. We've got a lot of exciting things going on at the river, as you well know. So this is a site evaluation and conceptual design report. It's not a preliminary report. If you recall, there were certain issues on this site that we needed to clear up before we got fully going on the, on the project itself. Brent, you may have to forward this, this isn't working. This is the general layout, the conceptual layout of the Whitewater facility. And you'll see on the left, there's an entry building. And then you'll see the three basic channels of the Whitewater facility. There's a lower channel, which is a flat channel that's used just for paddling and going to access the top pool. So then there's the middle channel, which is a more aggressive, steeper channel that's used for events and for competition. And then the top channel would be the recreational channel, which is a flatter gradient and not as aggressive channel. The start line, well, let me start with, the potential users would come in the plaza area and go in the entry building. In that entry building, there would be locker rooms, restrooms, and ticketing facilities, the administrative part of it. Then they would cross the channel and go over to the orientation pavilion, where they would, would get their orientation on how to conduct and how to use the kayaks. And then they would proceed on to the raft storage, where they would receive the kayak and the helmets and the paddles. And that would essentially be the starting point, where you would paddle through flat water, calm water, up to conveyor belt that's shown there at the pump. And that conveyor belt would take you up to the top pool. And that top pool is about 20 feet higher than the rest of it. And then you would pick the channel that you wanted to go on for your, your event. This is a cross-section of that channel. You can see that there's competition buoys there hanging, but there's ADA access points, and as I said, beginner and freestyle channels both. The layout edge, the different aspects of the channel there. This is a cross-section I really want to talk about that shows both sides, the competition channel and the recreational channels. The competition channel side is set up kind of like bleachers, but they're not really bleachers. It's just how the berm would be situated, so that it allows a lot of seating over there for the competition. Recreational side will be more of a smoother transition with trees and shade, and you could put a blanket and watch your, your family go down the channel. This is conceptual design of some massing for the structures. With the structures, we'll have the main building, as I mentioned, the kayak storage, boater orientation building, and then another kayak storage for, for permanent storage, and then pavilion possibly for future development. Top picture shows a building that is closest to I-35. We hope that that would be kind of an iconic structure there that you could see from I-35. It might have some signage, it might have special lighting, but it's anticipated that that building might be a story and a half or so. And then the one side of it might be two and a half stories high. You can see kind of the scale with the people. Lower picture shows that entry pavilion that I mentioned earlier. The left would be the administrative offices, possible ticketing, lockers, those kind of things. Then you can see a possible fountain structure there in the middle of the pavilion. And then on the right, might be a future building that we could put in there. The building on the left is about 18,000 square feet, and we hope to give that the possibility of being changed to two-story in the future. And then this is right about at Sixth and Phillips is that entry. The, the main part of this, this conceptual design report is really concentrating on the technical issues. And some of those technical issues are listed there. One of the main ones was a 54-inch sanitary sewer that extended along Fifth Street. Go ahead to the next slide. The sewer, it's anticipated to relocate that would be about 3/4 of a million dollars. So the, the whole point is to keep the Whitewater facility south of that, that sanitary sewer line. And that's what we've done in this, in this conceptual design. Also involved with this site was some existing overhead, not only distribution, but also transmission lines from OGN-E that they have in this area. Right now, we believe that we're in good shape with OGN-E to get those relocated, and we'll be able to construct this just as we'd planned, and those will be removed. One of the other issues that was of great concern was floodplain. And on this picture, the Whitewater facility is at the upper left. You can see I-35 in there. It's in that little pocket just north of the river. The whole area is, got 100-year floodplain on it. So the buildings will be raised to elevation 1177, which will be one foot above the 100-year flood. And then the, the channel itself, which obviously has water in it, will be a one foot above the 50-year floodplain. So because it's water, we don't have to be above the 100, but we want to be high enough that we're not getting debris in there every time we, we get a rain. This is a preliminary grading plan that's been developed for the site. Because of those geometrics that I just described, squeezing it down south of the sanitary sewer, we're not able to completely balance the site. And what we mean by balance is all the cut and all the fill equals out. But we have identified a good source of some dirt that we think we can get at a really good price. Another issue that we've looked at is oil wells. We know that there's three, there might be four oil wells in this area. We should be able to cap those and, and deal with those appropriately. One thing that's come up quite often is water quality and how this will, will operate. Right now, the consultant has had a lot of discussions with the Department of Labor and with the Health Department on how this would, would be looked at. And right now, the decision that they've all come to is that it will be looked at as an amusement ride. And it's really not an amusement ride, but that's how they're going to look at it as far as water quality. We're not going to have to keep the water to, say, a swimming pool standard, but it will be to good quality. It's not going to be using river water. It's anticipated that the original fill of about 13 million gallons will come from municipal water, but the daily water that we lose every day from splash or, or from evaporation will be made up through a well that'll be on site. As far as zoning, we meet all the zoning requirements. It should be noted that because where this is, off-street parking is not required, but we are going to provide 300 paved parking spaces to, to serve this facility. And that can also be used as overflow throughout the Boathouse District. This is layout of the property owners. There are 14 different property owners in this area. There is 11.4 acres of private land and two and a half acres of ODOT land, and the city owns the rest in this area. The consultant and the subcommittee and the advisory board has all recommended that we purchase all the property in there. We won't need it all right now, but we will need it for expansion. We need area for possible expansion. We hope that we can add another channel in future years, and then, of course, parking will always be needed to be expanded in there. So going to the budget, right now, we are under budget. You can see the, the line items there, just a little under the budget. And this includes the facility that I've shown, but also a main building of about 18,000 square feet, and ancillary buildings of 6,000 square feet, for a total of 24,000 square feet in total buildings. And we hope that there might be some alternates that we can do for this. Here's your schedule. Basically, I have a 26-month schedule, starting from today. I won't go through each of these, but the, the plan would be for a soft opening in February of 2015. Soft opening, meaning that it's ready to go, but we're not really taking patrons. We'll be training and getting employees there so that they can learn to operate the facility, make sure everything's going smooth. And then hopefully, in April of 2015, we'll open. The weather will be great. It's a good time of year, and we'll, we'll be ready to raft.
Your Honor.
Yes, David?
David, are the channels all concrete?
Yes, they are.
What's the depth of them roughly?
They're about six feet.
Okay. And I guess, will they look concrete, or will they give the appearance of more of a natural?
They'll be full, cleared pretty much to the top. I think they'll look a little bit like a swimming pool edge, but it won't, I don't think it'll look like a swimming pool. There'll be so much churning of the, of the water, and it'll be... There'll be so much churning of the water, and it'll be, you know, hard to see all the way to the bottom. And there's a special system that is used for the baffles to make the whitewater itself.
And will it be open year-round, or?
I'm not sure. You know, in December, January, I'll bet that the people who do it in competition would want to operate it, but that'll be an operations issue we'll have to look at.
Several years ago, we had an intercity visit with Charlotte, North Carolina, and we visited the Whitewater project there. How close is for is the design of our project, will it be to the project in Charlotte, or do you know?
I think that there's some similarities, and there's also some obvious differences. The Charlotte area is much bigger and was kind of integrated with their river. Ours is not, but we had the same designer that worked on the Charlotte facility, and I can't speak completely to that. But I think it'll be similar in some respects, but it's very unique.
Okay.
Probably one of the bigger differences is the Charlotte facility was a long ways from Charlotte. And if you remember, it's a pretty good bus ride out there, and ours will be walking distance to break down.
Any other comments or questions for David? All right, David, thanks.
Thank you.
How about a motion then on item 8H? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I, understand we do not need executive session. All right, how about a motion then? Moving forward, motion to strike. Cast your votes. Item struck. Item 8J, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is items from council. And Skip, you have one for you that you'd like us to look at.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is a concern that has been a continued concern as it relates to our planning commission and the movement of items from the planning commission to city council. I had asked staffed as a result of an applicant or an application that's been before the planning commission, I think, for, I know, at least three months, or four months. And as a result of the complaints from both sides in reference to having a decision, and of course, I think we just saw another issue where it's similar to what the outcome here could be, and that is that there's no action on the planning commission. It just moves to council. And based on that research, staffed advised me that there was not a timeframe that's set in the ordinance as it relates to how long a matter can stay within the planning commission. And so this is to give some timeframe that everyone would have, you know, full knowledge of, that after the public hearing, that it would be 60 days that the matter would move to council, with or without a vote of approval or disapproval by the planning commission.
What if both sides of an issue and the planning commission wanted to keep deferring it, keep talking about it, keep trying to work things out? Would it just automatically go to council? Is that your view?
No. The amendment provides for, that it doesn't include the time for deferrals that are requested by or agreed to by the applicant.
I see.
Yeah, it wouldn't count that.
All right. Well, this is going to be introduced today, and then council will have an opportunity to talk to you or discuss it in upcoming sessions.
Yes, sir.
All right. I guess we need a motion on that? All right, Skip, you want to make a motion on that to bring this?
A motion that we move this to be introduced.
All right, and a second?
Bring it back in.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Skip, any items from, other items from council?
No, Mayor, but I would like to say that I really do appreciate your inviting, especially Dr. Klein. I think far too many times, our citizens think that the only concern that we have as a council is issues of concrete and infrastructure. I think there's a bigger human infrastructure in our society, which has been clearly identified that, you know, we have been engaged in, and Councilman White has been a stalwart as it relates to the issue of smoking and fighting that battle at the legislature. And I really appreciate, you know, us getting, you know, recognized, and you bringing individuals, inviting them in to give us an opportunity to have this dialogue, so our citizens can understand that we do have a caring heart when it comes to issues of social concerns and health concerns in our society. Thank you.
It was a good visit. Meg?
Very quickly, Mayor, I just want to thank the neighbors in Heritage Hills for inviting me to come on Sunday to visit with their, at their annual meeting. We had really great dialogue, good questions. City manager, the Heritage Hills neighborhood, has voted to expend $30,000 in efforts for a quiet zone. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. $30,000. Isn't that terrific? I very much appreciate their concern. They did record the meeting, which was held at the Reduction Theater there on 13th and 16th and Broadway. And we had to stop twice during the meeting because of the sound of the train. So they have a vested interest in seeing this happen. And I also had a wonderful meeting with a couple of the folks that are organizing the Second Annual Better Block Event for Oklahoma City. They're planning on moving it this year from 7th and Hudson, where it was last year, down to the Farmers Market. And they're very interested in partnering with the city and talking about some innovative urban planning ideas. And so it was a really good meeting and a great way to start off Monday. So, thank you.
All right, David?
Your Honor, I'd just like to say that for those who weren't able to attend, that last week's State of the City address that you presented was just very interesting and very encouraging, and it just gives great hope to everybody in Oklahoma City as far as the future of Oklahoma City. Secondly, I'd like to comment on Dr. Klein's presentation and say that we really need to get support from as many places as possible, even the governor's office, I think, is this idea of allowing municipalities to begin to make ordinances addressing smoking. And so hopefully, we can, each of us, reach out to contacts that we have throughout the legislature, as well as the governor's office. I think we need the support of the leadership from both houses of the legislature, as well as the governor's office really kind of leading this case. So hopefully, we'll get that support. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Pete?
First thing is, most of you may know that Leroy Hanson passed away just a couple or three days ago, and I'd like some kind of resolution on the agenda next week to remember his contribution to the city. The second is, last week, I had an opportunity to have lunch with a group of young people. They were called, they're called the Capacity Corps. They work here from all over the country, working along with rebuilding together to repair a whole group of homes in northeast Oklahoma City. Really very rewarding experience talking to them. They're all, most of them college graduates. One of the guy that I sat next to was a Pittsburgh Pirate fan, and he was a senior in college. So he said he was, he thought he was one of only about three that were not already graduates. It's kind of like a Peace Corps operation. They come in and work for people that need it, that individuals that live in their own homes, and help them rehab their home to the point they can stay there. Just very encouraging. Rebuilding Together is just a great organization, and for them to pull this together with this national organization, really, there were some people there whose homes were being worked on, and just to see the smiles on their faces, and these kids just so excited about doing it. Some of them go from city to city. You know, that's what they do. They just go, it's like a year or two that they spend doing that, and it was just really a rewarding experience. I just wanted to comment on how nice it was. Thank you.
All right. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. With regards to the city's efforts on getting the right to enact our own smoking ordinances, Jim, this Friday, we're hosting, are we not, the state legislators at a luncheon, where they'll be coming in, the Oklahoma City senators?
Thursday.
And so that'd be, for our citizens out there, that'll be another opportunity that we'll have as a city body to express our desire to have that passed along, along with David's suggestion of getting the governor involved. So for citizens out there who are interested in this, we are moving on it as best we can. Then last week, I had the privilege of attending two neighborhood meetings. One, the Meridian Hills folks had the principal of Windsor Hills Elementary School come and give us an update on the demographics of Windsor Hills Elementary School and how that school has changed over the years from what it was when a number of us had moved in back in the 1960s and 1970s to what it was today. Presented his challenges from an educational perspective, and everybody came away with the, I think, the conclusion that he's on the right track, and we need to give him time, and we need to work with him, and we need to get involved and support our Putnam City School District or Oklahoma City School District, wherever you live, to the maximum that we can. And then, two nights later, at the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Meeting, we had the opportunity after the meeting to visit with a citizen who had a particular concern. And I'd like to pass on, if you would, Jim, to Major Becker and his staff, and also to Cindy Richards, for the way that the next day, they began to address this situation. The situation is a very complex one, but it told me that if a citizen has a legitimate concern, a neighborhood meeting is a great way to get that brought up, and the city staff will do its best within their means to see what kind of a rectification situation can be put together. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed?
I miss my sparring partner, Pat Ryan. It's not the same without him. I wish he was speedy recovery. I wish he was here. I miss him. I want to talk just for a second about the IMSA situation, a lot in the news. Most recently, revelations that despite the contract with Paramedics Plus, which states unequivocally that Paramedics Plus will buy all their fuel and maintain their vehicles that IMSA had purchased, some $7 million of fuel, just in a three-year period. I don't need to tell this council about the importance of sales tax and what being exempted from that sales tax means to us as a body or our economy. I agree with the Oklahomans Editorial Board that referenced State Auditor Gary Jones, who said the board has unintentionally fostered a culture of acquiescence in which officers and employees are permitted to establish inappropriate patterns of expenditure behavior and fail to disclose potential conflicts of interest unbeknown to members of the board. Lots of comments in the Tulsa World and Oklahoma comment section, and emails to me and other social media about corruption. And I just want to say about that, I think Pete White, one of the most important things he taught me just immediately upon electing, being elected, is that corruption is not, it's extraordinarily rare that people, that somebody would pass a briefcase of money under the table to someone. That just really doesn't happen. Corruption is about relationships that occur generally over long periods of time. It's human nature. If you develop friendships, if you work with people, that maybe you want them to do well, you share information that maybe you otherwise wouldn't have, you do something that maybe you otherwise wouldn't have. That's the nature, generally, of how, if there's corruption that occurs, it's, and that's, I think, the basic problem, is that you have this incestuous blurring of boundaries beyond distinction between a public trust, which is IMSA, and its for-profit subcontractor, which is Paramedics Plus. They office together, their offices are right next together. It's very difficult to figure out for me sometimes who works for who. And you've had one CEO for 35 years, you've had Paramedics Plus in there for 14 years. You have people that are just side by side, fighting battles, working in a difficult healthcare environment for many, many years. And so at some point, improper decisions are made. And I think it's the relationships that's as much a role as anything. The state auditor, you know, pointed out that donations to nonprofits like First T., which is as good a nonprofit as any, but at a time when we're doing rate hikes, asking this council for rate hikes, for a public trust to be making donations in violation of, apparent violation of the Oklahoma Constitution, that probably is about relationships. I think that, I just want to state unequivocally, because people are writing me and asking, I just want to state unequivocally that the response from the board needs to be swift, unequivocal, there needs to be swift implementation of the state auditor's recommendations. I think there needs to be replacement of IMSA's leadership and changing of personalities. I think if those that we're responsible for, if Jim Couch had done the things that are outlined in the state auditors and other auditors, there's no question that he would not be the city manager anymore. I don't think he would do those, by the way. But there's no question that he, or Kenny, or the judges, or anyone that this body has employs directly would continue employment. And finally, any taxes that are owed, I think, need to be paid immediately. Any of those things don't happen, and I think you sacrifice the public's trust. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, first, I too want to, as Pete, give my condolences to the Hanson family. I got to know, actually worked with Leroy right at the end of his tenure with the city, but more importantly, got to know him as the father of John Hanson, one of my assistant chiefs. And got to know Leroy well, and he was a great guy. Those of you that know Leroy know how passionate he was about city government. John, I talked to John on the phone last night, and he said, all the way up till the end, Leroy would watch this council meeting and applaud or cuss, as appropriate for Leroy, you know. So he was a great man, and I, my condolences to the Hanson family. I don't want to belabor the IMSA issue, because I think that there's been a lot of discussion on it. I just want to make one point to clear to the people that are watching. That audit done by the state auditor was a little different than audits that we're used to, in that if there was an audit done internally in the city and things were found that needed to be adjusted, staff would have an opportunity to provide a response to that and provide either answers to the questions or provide information to the auditor prior to the audit being released that might clear up some of the questions. As a special audit from the state, IMSA staff was not afforded that opportunity. So any of those things that are brought out in the audit, we haven't heard staff's answer to those yet, and that's what the trust is working for. I think, depending on how my fellow councilman wants to define swift, I think there will be action from the trust. But I think we do want to hear the other side of the story before we make those decisions and rush to judgment on anything. But I think it was a very comprehensive audit. I think it brought up many things that will be discussed in the months to come, and I'm sure that a lot of changes, certainly in operations or in the things that go on with the contract with Paramedics Plus, will be looked at and possibly changed. But I caution that we rush to judgment right now until we've had some of that other information come forward.
All right. City manager reports?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things this morning. First of all, in your packet, there is a December, July to December revenue enforcement programs summary. That's a good report to talk about some of our collection efforts. We also have the January 13 Sales and Use Tax Report, and it's, the sales tax for January is 4% over last year, and we budgeted 3% over last year, so we're 1% over target, and we've had some very good months, so that's still a very strong sales tax.
Would this have been from the Christmas time period?
It would have been a little bit, a little bit.
Beginning of it?
That's generally more credited to the February check, but part of that, the early shopping would be in the January check.
Okay.
And then we also have a city manager report regarding parade guidelines. We had some discussion about that a couple of weeks ago, and so we wanted to spell out exactly what the criterias are, what services we provide, how you go about doing a parade. And then we also listed what parades are out there and when they occur, just to get some information out there regarding... some information out there regarding, uh, regarding parades in general. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Larry?
On the parade, Jim, uh, when I was reading the, the information, I thought it said that 14 days before the actual event is when the parade organizers would communicate with the business owners? Did I pick that up right?
Josh Bryant's here and can answer that question.
I was running, councilman. Could you restate the question?
When I was, when I was reviewing the material on the parade, I thought I read in there that it was a 14-day period before the event was held, when the people involved putting on the parade, uh, would sit down and talk with the business owners? Did I miss that?
I think, I think that's something that we're looking at for the future, but it's something that, um, written into the revocables, there is a requirement for prior notice. But we haven't, up until this point, put a day stamp on it as to how far out front of the event, um, they need to provide notification.
Well, should go in there. It'd be my, my suggestion, that that period of time be more than just the 14 days, so that there were any inconsistencies. For want of a better thing, there'd be time to work it out. We wouldn't be down to the last minute. That was my only question.
Something that we're looking at for a guideline is a, a, was a 14 to 21-day period, but, um, I think kind of the standard that we're seeing from bigger cities and some of our peer cities is, they've kind of looked at a, a 30-day period as a little more comfortable for them. So, that's something that we will be discussing.
That would be in, in line with my, in tune with my thinking. Thank you, Josh.
Can, can I ask you about the paragraph Larry's asking you about, where it says, "This guide will include a new requirement for parade organizers to work with owners of properties adjacent to the staging area to get permission to use the areas."
Staging areas are going to require consent from adjacent property owners within the closures of the staging, staging area. And, um, that will require them to work very closely with everybody that they're going to be staging. If, if they're staging in front of the street in front of that business, it's going to require that they make contact with them and work with them. And in some cases, obviously, they're going to have to negotiate with them as to how they allow access to the businesses. Now, it's going to be a little bit different when it comes to the actual route. Um, and that can, that, that is defined a little differently by legal, but the staging area will require consent. And if the property owner does not give consent for that area, what we're looking at right at the moment is, is that, uh, they will have to require access to that property.
So, the, the 14 days Larry's asking you about, that's about the staging area?
I, I think what Councilman McAtee is referring to is actually a written notification that tells them when, the, who, what, when, and where of the event. Um, consent's going to have to be worked out a lot earlier than that. And that would, that would likely start, what we're looking at is, uh, for large events, 120-day period when they start contacting us and working with us as to what they need for their event. That's likely when we're going to be telling them, "You need to start working on consent now if you've got a staging area for your parade."
All right. Josh, thanks.
That's all, sir.
Citizens to be heard. No one has signed up. All right, ready to adjourn? Where to adjourn?